Now you're giving me the other.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We can stand for the pledge followed by a moment of silence. My pledge is that the United States of America and its republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, do I have the roll call?
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Walter.
Here.
Commissioner Bonick.
Present.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Alguier.
Yes.
Chairman Yoder.
Here.
I'll present.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have approval of board minutes. I believe we have six sets of minutes here to approve. I believe we might have a chance to review. Take a motion.
I, uh... I voted no at our last executive meeting on the resolution having to do with the state. And I did provide an explanation.
You don't have to.
I did not.
You don't have to explain enough.
I know, but I like to have, when I vote no, I like to have that explanation. Is that asking too much to say that? It's the first time anything like that.
Did you say no at the time and offer an explanation at the time?
Yes.
Okay, then what would you do if you want those minutes corrected? You would need to tell me how you would like those corrected.
That's funny, we'll all live.
So it is so noted in my brain that that's important.
Okay, yeah, yeah. It was on principle as opposed to other reasons.
Was that a motion to approve everything?
Did I say that?
No, you did not.
I have approved the minutes as presented.
All right. Is there support?
Yes.
All right. Moved and supported, discussion. Not, all in favor of approving the minimum minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. All right, next up, we got approval of the agenda, but any late additions or deletions? There's been all good. Administrator?
If I could just add, uh, to a resil... The Steve Stanton resolution wasn't on there. If you just put it on somebody else, I'll just read it. We'll make sure it's in the regular meeting also.
If you can read it into the record, it probably ought to be an action item.
That'd be great.
Number five, or a number, I would...
I would love to make it an action item.
Four C.
Four C. All right. Uh, Mr. Bon... Commissioner Bonick and then Commissioner Wessel.
Yeah, I would like to take under the action items, uh, two B and have a closed session before we discuss that out here.
So that's just a motion that we'll have when we get to that item.
And maybe make that, you know, like, four D.
Hold down here.
Move it down.
Two, closed session.
Okay.
So this is a request for a closed session?
Yes.
For what reason?
Well, we'll discuss that in a closed session.
Yeah.
It's a labor negotiation issue, so you mustn't...
That's fine, I just wondered what it was.
It's for item, two B.
Yeah, two B, fraternal order police labor council.
Okay.
Commissioner Wessel?
Move to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
All right, moved and supported, discussion. Not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. We have an agenda. All right, next up, we have communications. Administrator, please.
I don't have a specific update for this meeting beyond what was discussed at the, at the executive board meeting. I do have some additional information, though, regarding item two D. It's the 2% allocation regarding Lelandau Christian Neighbors and the food pantry, the food pantry program. And during that discussion, there was some indication that approximately 20% of the, that the request was to fund about 20% of the cost of the food bank program, food pantry program that Lelandau Christian Neighbors provides. And I did receive, actually Lena Vandermeulen received from, and provided to me information from LNC that approximately 27% year-to-date of the food pantry program is seniors and adults in excess of 60-plus years. So the amount of the program that is requested to be funding, funded by the 2% grant through senior services is, actually exceeds the amount of services provided to seniors when compared to the full amount of the program itself. If you have any questions, I can potentially provide that, provide that at the time of, that the item is considered. Otherwise, Mr. Chair, I don't have any further update for the agenda. I do understand that, that our presentation, however, from Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency, which is in the, you were provided with a PowerPoint in the packet at the presenter was, because of a personal emergency, unable to attend tonight. I believe that that's still the case. And that if you have any questions regarding that, you could present them to me and I could get answers from, from NMC, NMCAA for you.
I might be able to answer somewhat.
Commissioner Bonick?
Yeah, so you're saying senior services gives, they know that 20% of those people always show up and that they are old, they are, they come every Monday or whenever they give out the food?
Yeah, so far year-to-date, 2025, 27% of those individuals that applied or come to the food pantry are adult 60-plus years or older. And in the last 12 months, that has also been 20, 26%. That information came from Todd Shore at, at LCN. It was provided to me by Ms. Vandermeulen.
Yeah, that, and so they're, they're going by percentages.
Correct.
They're not going by the people they're actually giving it to.
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, I mean, are we gonna make, is that, we're gonna allow senior services to go by percentages of people in determining who they give it to?
The point, the point that I think the information is intended to provide is that the program actually serves more seniors than the amount of, the amount of funding that is being provided to the program. I guess I don't understand your question beyond.
Well, I just didn't know that senior services went by percentages.
He's saying that.
I know what he's saying, I just wanna know that. I don't think that that's the proper way to determine what you give out by percentages. It's just...
I don't know, I don't know how you would do it otherwise than to, because the, as I understood the question at the executive board meeting, the concern was that we were funding with money, or we're funding through the senior services program, a program that served other than seniors. That's what I understood the, the concern to be. And what we're saying is, the program has a certain amount of cost. They're funding about 20% of that with the 2% grant through senior services. And it provides 27% of benefits to seniors rather than to non-senior. So I don't know how else you would make that calculation.
Well, I just don't know that we should be going by percentages. Because you don't know that that shows up every Monday.
It's showed up consistently for the last 12 months and consistently year-to-date.
So those are the people who have signed up, we don't know. They don't check every, every, every time they give it out. But everybody here seems to be okay with that except for me.
I'm just telling you what, the information that isn't provided to me. They provided, they provided 121 seniors in 2025. And those are identified as having food insecurities, being homebound, or having an acute or chronic illness that prevents them from accessing fresh food. That's, that's the data that I have. I could, I could provide you with a full copy of the email if you, if you insist, would like to, but I'm just summarizing it for your information.
Any other questions for the administrator? All right. Not, we will move on to public comments. You have three minutes, agenda specific. Do you have any members? Mr. White?
Good evening, commissioners. Many of you gentlemen come from sudden debate. Tonight, you're going to be asked to officially adopt a hiring freeze that's noted on the agenda. I want to focus specifically on its impact on the finance department. Earlier this year, an experienced commissioner who's been through several budget cycles in the past said, I quote, "The new finance director and her team are doing great, and I am committed to getting them what they need to succeed." Those are the exact words. Yet last week, the same commissioner introduced a freeze that by the county administrator's own admission directly affects the finance department and prevents them from restoring an already approved union for their position. So what has changed? A position that was budgeted or proven clearly needed is now suddenly put on hold. And to outside observers, this timing feels odd. I have reason to believe that a finance department employee has filed a grievance against the county commissioner, administrator. If so, that would be deeply troubling. The appearance would be one of retaliation, effectively freezing only the finance department's staffing needs and risk undermining employee confidence and public trust. The finance department cannot function at full efficiency without its full staff, especially heading into an audit and budget preparation season. So to huddle it now after previously pledging full support undermines both consistency and credibility. I urge you to explain why this freeze is necessary, why the finance department is there to run it, and whether the timing is purely coincidental. Transparency matters and the public deserves to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Not, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Do you have any commissioner comments? All right. If not, we'll move along to our consent agenda items. And I'll just read a quick statement here. "The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected and will not need a second." Does anybody want to remove anything off the consent agenda? All right, not, take a motion.
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
All right, moved and supported. Go ahead with the roll call.
Could I just, on the consent agenda, I, at our last meeting, also requested, suggested that we look at going out for bids for legal services. I think it's been 10, 15 years since we've done that. And as long as we're down this path, but at the time, we didn't know, Jim, what the current, the contract was as far as when it ended.
Let's take that to do.
Well, we don't have discussion during consent agenda.
We just voted.
Yeah. I think you can have discussion anytime, can't you? On a motion? Can you read the statement again?
Yeah, "The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion."
Oh.
So...
How many words I gotta take back?
All right, so go ahead with the roll call.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Alguier?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonick?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Always.
Thank you.
Before you, before you move on, I, there was a, there was a question regarding item two B, the humidification system for the law enforcement center. The question was where the source of funds was, and that's a transfer from DTR. If there's any questions regarding what you already approved, we could address, I believe the finance director is prepared, prepared to address that. Just for, just for the record.
Anybody good? All right. Moving on to action item number one, we have the sheriff's office. We have the undersheriff here. Give us an update on the marine control grant provision.
Who do you think, like, this afternoon? I'm not here to ask for anybody. As you see in the packet, yesterday about lunch, we got notification from the state that federal funding related to the marine control grant came unfilled, I guess, I don't know. But it showed up. And in June, you approved a state funding portion of that marine program for $24,550. As of yesterday, there is an additional $26,550 available through federal funding as long as it can be approved with the appropriate paperwork signed off by the board chair and submitted by me. Therefore, the expedient nature to get this on today, so. It is for an additional $26,550 for the marine control grant funding for this year from 2025.
All right, do we have a motion? Commissioner Wessel?
I recommend that the county board of commissioners accept the 2025 Marine Safety Grant Amendment dated 9/15/2025 in the amount of $26,550. I further recommend that the board chair signs the amended agreement and the federal assurances letter so they can be uploaded into the grant portal by the undersheriff.
Second.
All right, moved and supported, discussion. Not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you, easy enough. Next up, administration two A, 457 plan document change.
Yes, this is a, this comes to us from the Nationwide Insurance Company that manages our 457B plan. They are adding a Actuarial Systems Corporation as a, as a service provider, and that requires a change in our, in our plan documentation. It's been reviewed by the Human Resources Department, and they've determined that the, other than the change of adding Actuarial, Actuarial Systems Corporation to that document, that it remains identical to the previous plan document. And they, we, we recommend that the county board commissioners approve that and sign the plan documents so we can continue the 457B retirement plan.
Motion, Mr. Alguier?
I move to recommend that the county board of commissioners sign the plan document to continue the 457 retirement plan through Nationwide.
So support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wessel, discussion. If not, all in favor of that motion, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. All right, thank you. Next up, we have item number two C, DNW Mechanical Service Agreement.
Yes, that was presented at the, the, presented last week. We're asking just a continuation of the DNW mechanical agreement to, to continue the use for three days, actually three and a half days.
Yes.
From Gary O'Connor through DNW Mechanical, mechanical service.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, when we find it.
It's in your...
I move that Lelandau County Board of Commissioners approve that three-year service agreement with DNW mechanical facilities maintenance provided by Gary O'Connor effective 1 January 26 through 31 December 28 at a total contract of an amount of $459,264 and waived bid requirements due to sole source nature and the dedicated technician arrangement.
Second.
All right, moved and supported, discussion.
Yeah, could you, there was that question on the 10 hours versus is he...
I think, no, he's, he's definitely working well in excess of 10 hours a week. I've personally seen him, you know, around the building on the days that he's designated to be here. The disconnect comes from the, he is not an employee of the county and is not required to use the LIMBL system. So all of the, all of the hours that he, that he, that he does work for us are not necessarily recorded in that system. That, that provided, I believe, a false impression regarding the hours that he worked. They were the hours that may have been spent on particular projects that were tracked by other members of the, of the, of the department that are required to comply with that or use that, that system. That's really where it came from.
Okay.
I'm, I have no doubt that, based upon what I see and the work that Gary performs, that he's fulfilling that contract as it is written.
Any other discussion? All right, if not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. All right, next up, we have item number two D, fall 2025, 2% allocation intended by Lelandau Christian Neighbors. Commissioner, Commissioner Wessel?
I move that the Lelandau County Board of Commissioners allow senior services in Lelandau Christian Neighbors Food Pantry to apply for 2% allocation for the fall 2025 cycle.
Support it.
All right, so moved and supported, discussion. Not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried six one. Next, we have the fall 2025, 2% allocation intended to apply Housing North. Commissioner Alguier?
I move that Lelandau County Board of Commissioners allow Housing North, Housing Ready Community Planning and Housing Action Strategy Information to apply for 2% allocations for the fall 2025 cycle.
Second.
Moved and supported, discussion. Commissioner Bonick?
Yeah, I just noticed in the paper that they talked about 85% of our requests are going to nonprofits. 85% of their, their property taxes, we're saying we can allow it to give to, we're gonna donate to nonprofits. So I just, I just think that that's excessive and that, you know, things like the AEDs, pads and other things, we're neglecting and not asking for those to be paid for. But we're asking for us to donate the taxes, the property taxes for the casino to go to nonprofits. And I don't understand why we continue to do that.
All right, any other discussion?
Yes, the, the last Housing North contract, we never did get a report as we were supposed to.
They're scheduled for November.
Well, I, hopefully there, I mean, I'm not sure why we didn't get a report, but that was also through 2%. And I'm trying, and my comment to Housing North is, please give us a report and follow through on that. But my question is, now we have new policy that we approved. Is there a requirement in that policy to also provide a, a report at the end? I can't remember it, to be honest.
It was my suggestion that you require that, but you chose not to do so. The board chose to excise that portion from the suggested policy.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried five two. All right, next up, we're up to finance three A, Addendum to opioid Funds Management Agreement 2025.
Yes, last week, we spoke about needing an addendum to the existing contract with Lelandau County Family Coordinating Council. Coastal was able to produce that document in time, will you consider it tonight?
All right, Commissioner Alguier?
Lelandau County Board of Commissioners moves to approve the amendment to the terms of the county use of opioid settlement funding, funds funding and management agreement between Lelandau County and Lelandau County Family Coordinating Council for budget year 2025 to the regular meeting on September 16, 2025. I think, I think promotion ended after the word 2025.
That's what it says here, I just typed in last week's thing. Should it say 20?
The motion, I mean, yes, just finishes with, and authorize the chairman of the board to decide.
Okay. I'm willing to amend.
All right. Is there support for that? Supported by Commissioner Wessel? Discussion?
Always me.
All right, go forward.
Well, I'd like to know where all this money, where this money goes. I won't say all this money, but it is a sizable chunk of money. And I, I looked at our last contract, and it had an amendment, an addendum, appendix, whatever, A, and that had an actual budget in it on where this money was supposed to be spent. And this one doesn't have that, it just says we're gonna spend it for the same things. And I don't, I think that when you have a program like that, every year you should evaluate how that money's spent, and you should be able to report to us, which that contract allowed us to require them to, how that the money actually went to the specific areas that it was supposed to go to. And this particular contract has less, has less of those types of requirements in it. And, I mean, I'm not suggesting that anything was done wrong, I'm not saying that at all. I just believe the funds helped, and I do believe the funds helped a lot of kids in Lelandau County. But I believe we have to tighten up our reporting and oversight, and we can't do that without the help of our partners. So I would like to suggest an addendum of the contract which would say, recipient will be required to provide a financial and narrative report by November 1, 2025, explaining how funds from opioid settlements were spent in 2024 in comparison to the estimated budget included in the 2024 contract. Also, recipient will provide by February 1, 2026, a financial and narrative report showing how funds for 2025 were spent in comparison to the 2024 budget, which was carried over to the 2025 calendar and fiscal year. Support.
All right, so we have an amendment, so that was an amendment.
And I have that written down.
Okay, that amendment was, made that motion, it was supported. Discussion on the amendment?
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the, with the amendment. I think that's probably good practice. I will say that Sharon Breland and the lit group both came in and reported late last year on what they were doing with those funds. But it's probably time that this board hears it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Alguier?
I'd like to add, just so you know, there's very, very strict guidelines on the use of these types of funds. Substance funds are highly, highly highly regulated. So I just want you to know that in the meantime, because you seem very concerned.
I'm just looking for accountability, that's it.
Yeah, and it's used by professionals.
Absolutely.
All right, any other discussion on the amendment? Yep.
I believe that Sharon Breland is on your budget workshop presentation October 21. I believe Lauren shared with me, so you will be seeing her on October 21.
And I am hoping that we are done by that date, because I said I will be out of town. And I was promised we would be done by then.
All right. Any other discussion on that amendment?
If not, we need to change the schedule.
All right. All, all those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. All right, now we're back to the original motion, discussion on the original motion. Not, all in favor of the original motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. All right, thank you. Next up, we have the MITC grant acceptance fiscal year 2026.
Yes, and I believe we're going to have a Zoom presentation by Paul Jarboe and Katie of Jarboe &amp; Field, and Lauren will be bringing them up shortly.
There he is.
To give us an update as to the MIDC commission meeting.
Good evening. Are you able to hear us?
Paul, Katie.
We, we cannot hear anything. No, can't hear anything. Is there a volume on our end that needs to go up?
Lauren, Lauren's in control from her end and I'm not sure, they could hear us, I'm not sure, but we're having audio.
Oh, they can hear us, so Lauren, is there, is there anything you can turn the volume up there?
Well, here comes Jen, I don't think her.
That might be. Oh.
Try again, Paul.
There we go.
Okay, well, hi, everybody, thanks, thanks for having us, we're sorry we're not there in person. Katie's at home taking care of her own stuff, I'm actually running the meeting now, we're in playoffs. I'm the president of this board, so we take credit for that. Just as a promotion, we're showing Sister Act for the next three weekends, so please invite your people to see us. We just wanted to give you a brief update about MIDC. And Katie, Richard is our program manager, who really is in charge of the finances of MIDC and monitors the actions that have been passing. Katie and I had an opportunity to observe the MIDC commission meeting shortly ago and Katie, why don't you fill the minute up, what happened and what we're anticipating moving forward for Leland County, please?
Sure, so at the commission meeting, they authorized an amendment to our current contract. Our current contract ends September 30th. They've approved an amendment to extend that beyond September 30th, given that none of, the contracts have been authorized, given there is not a state budget. Once they have a finalized state budget, they will be signing contracts and able to distribute money. So until then, they have authorized this amendment to allow us to continue on with our fiscal year 25 funds and rates. So we are, we don't have a contract yet, but we are being told that we will have a contract. The next commission meeting is October 21st, I believe. And they anticipate that all contracts will be approved then and the grants will be sent out the following week for signature. So we are just prepared to continue forward through, you know, after September 30th, after the current contract is done, continue with our fiscal year 25 rates, use any unextended funds from fiscal year 25 as we begin fiscal year 26, which was the direction of MIDC, given that no grant on the ministry did yet.
Well, to supplement Katie's report, there are a total of 120 systems underneath the MIDC in Leland County's workforce. At this point, only 40 of the 120 systems proposed compliance plans and budget have been approved by the State Commission, though literally two-thirds have not. And in asking why, the answer we got is because they basically stopped approving them until they know they've got the money available through the state budget. As far as Leland County's plan is concerned, it's been approved by our office. It's reviewed, prepared and approved by our office, it's been approved by the MIDC regional manager, it's been reviewed and approved by the senior regional manager, and now it's simply waiting for final approval by MIDC senior staff. We're confident it will be approved. The numbers that are in the proposed cost analysis, which I think we have been shared in last week's material, we're confident those will be approved. The important thing for the board to know is that the local share, which is what the county actually has to contribute to its Inogen Defense Program, has not increased at all in the last, entire time. I remember it actually went down this year. But, so we're, we're somewhat delayed since we've delayed the state budget, just like the educational departments, just like, you know, every other department that's partially or fully funded by the state of Michigan. We're confident it's all going to work out, but we don't have the final paperwork to present to you. You know, Katie, I didn't share the dates of the October meeting. We've been told that all of the remaining 80 plans will be on the calendar for approval and that contracts would be sent out the following week, I mean, we did bring that up. Have any questions if we can, but I think for this part, you as a board pretty much know what we're going to.
Commissioner Wessel?
Paul, the, and thank you for being here. 60,000, I think that's up from last year, isn't it, our cost?
I think it was up 20, I think it was up 2,500 bucks, it will be in the books.
And what's that, what, how do you calculate that? Is it number of clients you anticipate, number of hours?
Well, Katie, and I think there had been a question tied to you at last week about the number of cases or defendants, because we're really not, they're not clients of MIDC, they're clients of the individual attorney. So Katie, I think you shared some numbers, do you have those, Kate?
I do, so as of last week for fiscal year 25, we had 170 cases serving 145 different defendants.
Thank you.
Well, that's a, that gives you 90,000, the volume of work that the private attorneys are doing and are being paid through the state MIDC funds. The 60,000 that we proposed, I think it was up, like I said, maybe 2,500 bucks, covers all the work that my office does, that Katie does, that I do for your county. And so it's everything, including the daily assignment of cases, providing attorneys for arraignment purposes on a weekly, if not more often, basis. The, the management of the, of the case information system that we have, the preparation of the quarterly reports with the assistance of your finance department, the preparation and filing and monitoring of the compliance plans that we file with the state of Michigan every year. So it's, it's, that's simply the, the cost for us to do what we do to manage this program on your behalf. Your, again, from out of pocket standpoint for the, for the system, the local system, in this case, Leland County. And the same is true with Hampton County and Grand Barbers County, that are doing the same services for. The local shares have not changed, you are now, we're out of pocket. To, on your share of Inogen Defense Program has not increased over the years since we started this program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have a motion?
Well, that's the thing, should we wait until October? Paul and Katie, that's the recommendation that we wait to approve the.
Yeah, I don't, there's, I mean, I, we're pretty confident that what we've provided to you folks will be the final picture, but, you know, you never say never. And yet, we have no problem continuing under the resolution that the MIDC commission voted on to allow us to continue our work based upon the fiscal 25 plan, fully with the recommendation of this table. Not only the approval of the submitted plan, but also our independent contractor group of the county. You know, we just bring them up when, when they're in the final form. We will stop doing our work, the attorney won't stop doing their work. There will be funds available to pay for a while on state system to go on for three or four months. We have a discussion, but we're hopeful that those will come.
All right.
So let's move this to.
Move this to the, October.
Actually be November, because they're not meeting until October 21st.
Oh, 21st, so move to November.
And we're early in October.
Okay.
Let's move it to November.
That's pretty in November.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
I'll move, I'll move that.
Okay.
Support.
Movement's supported, discussion?
Does that work to them?
Will that work?
November?
Yeah, what is your date in November?
November 15th.
November 15th?
Sure, he'll, if it goes before you, you, for all the plans, he'll be, he'll have everything ready to go before that, that's fine.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. Any other, any other discussion on that? All right, if not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you, Paul, thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work you folks are doing, we appreciate working together.
Thank you, have a good evening. All right, so does that mean the contract as well? That gets tabled too then? All right, so do you have a motion specifically on that, to table that to November as well, I guess?
Hmm.
Item 3C.
Item 3C, MIDC, MACC contract with Jarboe.
I thought that motion was both the items.
Oh, was it? I don't.
They were talking about an interchange.
Okay, is that your understanding, Commissioner Bunny?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, next up, we have item number 4A, Hiring Fries, brought to us by Commissioner Robbins.
I recommend that Leland County Board of Commissioners adopt by appropriate resolution a temporary hiring freeze until such time as a 2026 budget has been approved. Board of Commissioners will not approve new positions or no, no positions authorized in the 25 budget, but currently vacant, may be filled unless appropriate elected official or department heads and the county administrator graves in writ report, position is essential to continue the existing level service.
Support.
All right, so movement's supported, discussion? Commissioner Bunny?
Yeah, I'd like to amend that with, with, just put the exception in for the, the finance department. We already know that that's good and I, I think we heard from, from the public and I think that we, we need to really consider that, accept that as the exception.
I think it says in the motion.
All right, is there support for that amendment?
I would support that amendment.
All right, so now we're going to have discussion on that amendment. Commissioner Algar?
You know, I was initially concerned about that, but the motion does state all the person has to do is discuss it with the administrator and his report can be in one of his weekly reports, so we don't have to wait till September or October. So I'm, I'm fine with the original motion because I, we have to work with our administrator.
All right.
So I will not vote for the amendment.
Commissioner Walberg?
My concern is we've already filled positions this week in other departments. Correct, the sheriff just said he hired somebody?
I don't, not that I'm worried.
Mike or Jim?
He was actually hired July 4th, started yesterday.
Oh.
He has been on the books, hired, ready to go since the early part of July.
All right, are you done, Commissioner Walter?
I guess, I mean, yes, well, yes, I vote for that.
All right, Commissioner Wessel?
Well, I, I, I support the original motion because I, obviously staff are our most valuable asset, but it's always good practice when you have a vacancy to have our administrator and the department head sit down and say, is that the best use of these county funds at this time? And I think this motion allows that to happen. And I think it's good practice to have it happen, and I think it's always good practice to have our administrator involved in a hiring decision. And, and so I, I will not support the amendment, but I will support the, the original motion.
All right, Commissioner Bunny?
Yeah, I mean, Kathy's talked about, you know, training these people and that they're doing, she and I think it's Mike are doing double duty because they're, they're missing the person in their, their office, so.
Call the question.
I think it's very important that, that we do, that we do allow this to happen and encourage it, so.
I had another question too, so.
I'd like to comment too.
I don't want to let everybody speak here, so.
So, so I'm just saying that I, I just, that's why I, I made the motion, because I think we need to, to be aware of that and, and we're going to have an audit coming up here next year and that person, are they going to be in training at that time if we don't get him in place?
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, it's, I was brought up at the, as the discussion ensued, because I had talked about a hiring freeze. If you look at the context and what I said, I was referring to the 2026 budget, not the current budget. I had not done any homework and I, I had no way to know what, how a freeze might affect the function of county government. And while wording of the motion describes a two or three month hiring freeze throughout county government, it's very obvious that this is affected at, directed at just one department. Nobody else is, it's, that's the department that has someone they want to hire. At last, at the last meeting, you had said, with the exception of the, of the accounting, of the finance department, I agreed with you at that, at that time, I think that that should be an exception. And, and it was also discussed by my colleagues how important finance, the changes in the finance department are coming up with a new accounting system. I would like to see us be much more transparent as far as our finances and to do that, you have to hire someone, you have to have a full staff there to do it. And we have a reason not to institute a hiring freeze directed at the finance department. And that is the thing we're not talking about, a personnel complaint that was filed. With that in mind, there's no benefit to it, other than, no benefit throughout county government to it. And I'm afraid it comes back at us depending on the outcome of that, of that, of that issue. So I, I see a big possible downside to, to passing this and I see absolutely no upside to passing this unless we have made a decision that the finance department should only have three employees. If we decide that, that's fine, but otherwise, this doesn't, this is not a good look.
All right, Commissioner Wessel, then I'll close it out.
Well, I've, I heard Commissioner Campbell talk about transparency, so I'll be transparent. Why, the reason I support this is I, I've been on the board for 11 years. I have never heard of a position being filled with the administrator not knowing about it until he saw a paper that was handed him and said, I want to hire this person. As an administrator, must be involved, must, must support the positions when they're hired and that's standard practice at any organization I've been in.
So it was the, the process that.
It's the process.
Yeah, that, that you're getting at.
All right, so one question I have for you, Commissioner Bunny, is what part of this motion does not? All right, so one question I have for you, Commissioner Bunny, is what part of this motion does not satisfy your amendment?
What part doesn't? Just that we're, we're going to have a freeze on, on, basically on the finance department. So I'm just saying that I don't want that to be a freeze on it of any kind.
Okay, because I don't read this as a, as a, it's not going to happen, I read it as a temporary pause where it gets a review type of thing. I don't read, I don't read it that motion as that, so that's, I guess, why I was, I was big of a concern with that, so. All right. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, fails three to four. All right, so now we're back to the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion? All right, if not, all in favor of the original motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried four three. All right, next up, we are to item 4B, resolution opposing MDHHS competitive procurement process, brought to us by Commissioner Wessel.
The, we, we had a resolution from, uh, uh, another county asking the state legislators not to support privatization of the community mental health system and going out for bids. Uh, I presented, I presented the rationale last week, but certainly the people most impacted by that will be the people that are least able to afford it, the people that don't have insurance. It also takes our board and the community mental health board out of the process of supervising those programs, so we lose local control. And I believe it's important that we, we support this for our county's residents. Our county's residents deserve that they have a community health system based upon best practice and not profit. I hope you'll support the resolution.
Is there a motion?
I move to support the resolution as presented last week and included in last week's board book.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, discussion?
Do we have a copy of that? Here now?
I didn't bring another copy, it's, it's in last week's board packet.
Yeah, I didn't bring that packet with me.
I could find it and read it if you want me to.
If you, if you take a break, I can go get this and print it out.
Sure.
Probably be a good idea, I hate to vote on something that we haven't double checked and read yet.
All right, we'll take a quick, you need two minutes or whatever?
Three, five.
All right, five minutes. Campbell?
Yep, I'm good.
All right, we're back in session. We have a motion, and we had support, discussion on that motion.
Yes, I'm going to vote no, but not because of anything that was said by my colleague, Mr. Wessel. I agree with everything he said, I just don't think resolutions of those types are, should be handled by this body.
Commissioner Bunny?
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Campbell, I also am already receiving other resolutions that people want me to present. If we're going to do these, then I'm going to start doing resolutions, so I will vote no on this as well.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, if not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
That's a vote call.
My bad, vote call.
Okay, that motion was by Commissioner Wessel, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yep, and you, and you got the comments by Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah.
So I, so we got that in minutes now.
I, I have both. Uh, Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Algar?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunnyck?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Five to two.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have amended to the agenda 4C, Steve Stanton Resolution, brought to us by Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I have that out here. Uh, yeah, I would like to move to recognize with appreciation Steve Stanton for his many years of service on Veterans Affairs Administrative Committee, as well as gratitude for his military service to his country while serving in Vietnam during the Vietnam War.
Support. All right, it's been moved and supported. Commissioner Wessel. Discussion?
We will miss his contributions to the county.
Certainly will. All right, that was by resolution, from my understanding, Commissioner Campbell?
I needed a motion.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Motion, fine.
It's just a motion.
Just a motion, okay. All right, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. All right, thank you, and next up, we have moved down, which was originally 2B, perpetual order police, new settlement, that was, Commissioner Bunnyck wanted to do a closed session, Commissioner Bunnyck?
Yeah, I would, I would like us to do that after public comment, do our review financial special report, public comment, and then have our, our closed session.
Okay.
If that would be okay.
Fine, yep. So with that, we'll move to review of financials.
Thank you, don't worry, there's any invoices that we need to question, one thing to your attention, there were late, it was put on the desk this evening. Just a few late notes that we want to get prepared for. Does anyone have any questions on yours?
All right, I guess we're all good. Yep, go for it.
Okay, I would just like to maybe shed some light on some misinformation. Shortly after Administrator Dyer was hired, we were talking about opening my office, and that the search was on with posting to Indeed and the posting downstairs is a team composition that's required. I did receive no less than 15 applications over a period of the summer and interviewed a few people, and Commissioner Administrator Dyer and I did speak about the position in that he was wondering just with time clock coming on, would that maybe reduce the responsibilities of that desk? And he, as, perhaps there would be an opportunity for the county to explore an additional communications director. And I, I reviewed, I thought about that for a while, but I know that time clock plus will be required mapping. Plus, at the time, my work also, my existing work, expressed a desire to expand her knowledge of the department to help with this training and move from AP to payroll. So then my focus of work in the process, for hiring process shifted to more of a person with AP direction. So there was a point during the summer where we weren't getting quality applicants, so HR came to me and asked me if I should take down my posting for a brief time and put it back up on Indeed. I guess that's a strategy that HR managers use to refresh it in the world interest, and we got some more applications. And I interviewed one individual by phone and pulled HR in on an interview in person, and that's the person that I felt would be a candidate to offer the position to. In the past, under different administrators, the director, myself included, was allowed to write my own offer letters, which I did for my current hires, and so I did draft the offer letter to this candidate, took it to HR for her review, and she told me that, oh gosh, Administrator Dyer would prefer to write offer letters. And I said, oh, I'm sorry, I did not know, that is fine. This is, this is what, you know, I'm not going to look at offering this individual. And she drafted the letter, had me proof that, and gave it to Administrator Dyer on Thursday prior to Labor Day. And that also was just shortly after the workshop on August Tuesday before Labor Day, where you made the comments, Mr., or Commissioner Campbell, about the freeze, and then Jim and I had a discussion about what I heard and what he heard, and that I felt it was more appropriate to expand its workforce, expanded hours, expanding for the 26th round of my position that we have opened, is approved and budgeted both in '25 and '26. And here we are now, I just thought you'd like some background on the information to help you understand that process. Thank you.
Thank you. You? You have a special reports, yep?
Yes, since we have gone in this direction, let me give you an enlightenment on what happened regarding this position. First of all, when I, early on in my time here, the finance director actually came to me and suggested that because we were going to implement time clock, it may not be necessary to fill that fourth position. She told me it may not be necessary, and I said, that's interesting, because if that's the case, that money could potentially be used elsewhere. I didn't hear anything about that for approximately three weeks, and then I went to her and said, what's the status of that position? And I was told, I think I'm going to be hiring. I said, fine, if that's the way you want to go, that's what we're going to do. I heard nothing about that position from that day until the day that I was handed an offer letter, and finance director is absolutely correct, that occurred after there was a suggestion from several county commissioners to me that they wanted to implement the hiring freeze countywide. And I indicated to the, first of all, it's interesting that that offer letter was not presented to me. The fact that the position was posted again after having been removed from the posting was never presented to me as a possibility. It was completely in the dark as to whether that position was going to be filled or not. I'm handed an offer letter and I said, I think there's a interest on the part of numerous commissioners to have a hiring freeze, not my idea, commissioner idea. And I said, in light of that, wouldn't it be a better idea to wait and see what the, what the commission would do? It was presented by a commissioner, at your last meeting, you voted in favor of that. You would think that when, when that, that item has a provision that says, unless approved by the, in a report from the administrator, you would think that if it was so essential that that position be immediately filled, that the department head would have come to me the next day and discussed why that position was essential. That has yet to happen. Instead, individuals in this building have attempted to build a political case for whether that position should be filled by the board rather than by me. You hired me as your chief administrative officer, I'm responsible for hiring and firing of those below the administrator level. And instead, this has been turned into a political issue to assert power and to attempt to reduce the ability of the administrator to actually do his job. And this is not the first time. This is just another example of how business is done here. You've had reports from, before I even daren't the door of Leona County, that says there are people in this building that are obstructive, that refuse to consider alternatives to what's been done in the past. And frankly, you get the government that you deserve when that happens. All right?
That will move on to public comment. Yes?
Good evening, commissioners. While you're doing the human, it's always interesting, isn't it? And so one of the reasons I'm here tonight, maybe I've seen a lot of people, is because I was in Caesar the other day at the Polish and I was talking to a young man in the Polish, and if you haven't been there, I really recommend it. But, you know, I was, it was great to hear his passion for his army and what he does and how, how it fit into the community. And while he was there, he was saying he was really upset with what's going on right now and the political climate in the county. And how, he said, you know, we should just, no matter what religion you are, you know, people came to this country for freedom of religion, it doesn't mean one religion is better than the other. That we should acknowledge each other's religion and acknowledge each other as neighbors, not as enemies. And while I was speaking with him, there was another, both of these people, at least at my age, another young woman there thing, she was frightened. She was frightened about what's happening in the county, and she wasn't sure that we wouldn't have shootings in this county. So I thought about it, and I thought, you know, we do live in paradise, we all, everybody who lives here knows that. And I'd like to make sure we treat it that way, so I thought, and I don't expect you to do exactly what I say, I know this is public comment, but, so I, I wrote a letter to Steve, and this is what I said, excuse me, Chairman Yoder. Dear Chairman Yoder, I'm concerned about the advent of politics that soon be taking over our country and our counties. I'm hoping that the Board of Commissioners will adopt a resolution of unity for all of our neighbors in Lima. Here's an example of such a resolution. A resolution for peace, safety, and mutual respect in Lima County. Whereas the people of Lima County value the safety, well-being, and dignity of all who live, work, and visit here. And whereas violence in any form, whether physical, verbal, or psychological, undermines the fabric of community life and erodes trust between neighbors. And whereas the citizens of Lima County affirm that all people, regardless of background, belief, or opinion, are entitled to protection from violence and intimidation. And whereas mutual respect or differing perspective is essential to preserving a healthy democracy and fostering the sphere of cooperation in our county. And whereas Lima County recognize that our greatest strength, folks. Shoot. Our greatest strength lies in treating one another as neighbors, committed to living in peace and working together for the common good. Now therefore be it resolved that Lima County affirms its commitment to a community free from violence and intimidation, and be it further resolved that Lima County encourages all residents to respect differences of opinion to engage in civil discourse and not hold the people compared in social. And be it finally resolved that Lima County calls upon all of you here to regard each other as neighbors, certainly in the safety and passion and mutual respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, and Mr. Lee's hard rock, you'll hand that. So, well, it's fairly, the word sounds fair. Um, Lima Energy is sponsoring an event called Sunday on 9/21, this Sunday. It's a national event, Build a Heaven is involved if you're an old energy nerd or anything. Build a Heaven, seventies, maybe, talking about renewable energy, which is now our, our primary source of energy. Um, cheapest solar, wind, and batteries, and the cheapest to produce for the power world. We're doubling record numbers of solar farms in different areas of the world. Come to the movie at the Bay Theater on a cloud, join me, join in the discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, all. Any other, yes, Towski?
Steve Passage from Silver Pudge.
Steve Passage from Solon County. Commissioners, our own Leland County Personnel Policy shows the problem clearly. If an employee complaint is not resolved at step one, it escalates to the county administrator for investigation response. But what happens when the complaint is about the administrator himself? By design, the process puts the very subject of the complaint in charge of investigating it. This is an intangible conflict. It appears that under county personnel policies, the grievance is already triggered outside council involvement. That likely means an investigation is underway. Typically, such reviews are narrow, limited to the file and listed witnesses. But the Board could broaden the scope through all the administrators' direct reports. If you did, you might hear similar concerns from others if they feel safe to speak. Now, consider the timing. At your September night meeting, Commissioner Roderick introduced a hiring freeze. The Finance Director explained on the record that she urgently needed to restore a budgeted unit clerk. Yet the freeze was pushed forward anyways. The administrator himself confirmed Finance was one of only two departments directly affected. From the outside, that looks less like a neutral budget tool and more like pressure. Maybe it's coincidence, but appearances matter, especially when staff already fear retaliation for the loss of benefit that they speak openly. Cass County offers a model. Just last month, when their administrator faced workplace allegations, the Cass Board placed him unpaid administratively while outside council investigated. Council reported directly to the Board, not to the administrator. The process concluded with unanimous vote to terminate for cause. Here in Leland, in Leland, employer confidence depends on commissioners ensuring the same fire law. That means directing outside council to report to the Board only, not to the administrator, excluding the administrator from any role in the process. Affirming that retaliation, including subtle acts like blocking a hire or altering workloads, will not be tolerated. The Board alone has the duty and authority to ensure a fair process. Employees are watching. Your decision will signal whether Leland County values integrity and accountability in this leadership. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Tawski?
Good evening. We are here for something that was omitted, or appears to be intentionally omitted at every executive committee meeting. And that is to get a request after many months, an apology resolution. As required, we could have made 11/2021 Board of Commissioners clerk loading motion. Without a plan, some discussion with clerk, knowing the necessity of justification or benefit of the court. That clerk loading decision removes all financial resources and responsibilities from the clerk's office. It's harmed the clerk, financial staff, and wasted nearly a million dollars of taxpayers' money. Obviously caused chaos among employees in this building. It's still ongoing. It has caused difficult, impaired waters. And no pass, busting. Again, we respectfully request this resolution at your earliest time. Can you help bring one? I can, you can help. It's clear open this commission who saw once the salad some of its 2020, 2024 in presence, not commissioned by the government. On another matter, we talked about senior citizens, but I'm trying to understand this. When we talk about senior citizens and benefits of senior citizens, are we talking people over 65 and women? Or are we talking about another group of people? And also, are we always talking about these best of people and being members? That seems to be a mess out of the whole process. Detestation, means testing, and agents have left our process. You know, it's very confusing for ordinary people to understand what that means. Because you can use, you can don off any, any way you want to after. You extract it from us, under threat of dire consequences. One thing, the final benefits that come from the tribe, in my mind, are guilt. Paymen, lost taxes, I've read the legal documents that supply that most sponsored use. We are very strong if this continues in its way. We will not have any of that money ever on for any use in those years. They'll be all given to some organizations and nothing for service and help county's finances. Finally, I'm very confused and perplexed about this, this issue of hiring. Seems to me that in the pending meetings that the decision to hire a staff member for the Finance Department was all final and done. And all of a sudden, it's pulled from the table. As we have the most, most qualified Finance Department now ever we've ever had. And it's perfect and so we can go without an employee if it was needed. Now, if it was, wasn't needed, then the man is thinking, this commission man is thinking of moving. So it's, it's, I begin to wonder, are we inviting and sending in invitations for the Finance Department to leave? Well, sure, are we doing that? It's very confusing to me. So someone has to, to sort out the document if you can, to tell us what's going on. Thank you.
You? Any other public comment? This now.
Hi, Kate Hall, Coolwood Township. I just wanted to say thank you for all that you do for our county. And basically, just ditto to what I'm saying that you guys have about statement of immunity. I do think there's a lot of fear and fear mongering that's going on. And I think it would be powerful to make a statement of immunity. And just that island's event isn't tolerated in our, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Sheriff?
Good evening. Obviously, the Under Sheriff and also the Township of Leland. I just wanted to make a clarification based, basically. On the budget session this afternoon, there was comments that came up at that point and at other meetings, that we are a very safe county. And at least from my personal opinion, there were connotations that maybe the Sheriff's Office is overstaffed. We are budgeted for 21 people from the Sheriff's Department. Currently staffed by 17. I'm not even going to get into hiring freezes. I am fine with it. If that's what you choose, that's what we will do. My point is, is the national average is one officer for every thousand people in the population of the jurisdiction. We are 21. That would be 21,000 people. The census for 2024 showed our population at roughly 22,500. And you forget, six months out of the year, we are probably 60,000 to 80,000. So I personally, the administration, in several deputies take offense to the fact that we would be perceived as overstaffed. We are in a unique position. We are in a unique county. We are two different agencies. Six months out of the year, I can fall for that argument. There are times we are tripping over each other. In the summer, maybe even more, from March to November now, we get our high end skipped. We are not staffed where we should be. We have been understaffed for probably close to a year now, for a lot of reasons that you're all aware of. Housing. Based on that same census, the median average income in this county is $91,000 and change. One person in the Sheriff's Office makes that on base salary investment, sure. I don't even make that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, Susan.
Go, Susan, tell me something. And the handout that I gave you is, basically, it's a transcript of this talk. It's in the front picture there. And it's the Adam Corolla Show. And he's got two computer, computer expert on the fraud that's going on. And so, it's very interesting talk. There's a lot in there. And I've transcribed it with my Otter.ai. It's not perfect, but it's pretty good. And it's online. The county was very good about getting it up right away. About within a half hour when I sent it over today. So it's up online right now. And that's the number two. Obviously, you guys don't know how to get there, but that kind of shows the path to get to these four items. And it's under my name, or Susan, or whoever puts something in. It's really a nice feature that we can put stuff there. So that's, you only get two pages, but the other 43 are online right now. And it's just a transcript. And if you look at number three there, that is something I'm going to play on the phone here in just a little bit. Let's move on to the back page, though. It's talking about this book, Stolen: Stolen Elections. And it's got a link to it. I bought the book and I've got it on Kindle also. And just one review here by one of the guys that's in the movie, Gary Bernstein. "The story of a complex and vicious attack on the underpinnings of American and global democracy. Stolen elections need to be read by all those who value freedom." So it's, it's pretty nice to read. The charts are a little bit small in here, so you can't quite read them all. But the rest is real readable. And Kindle version, you can enlarge the charts. There's quite a few charts in this. The point two is whistle bar. It's going down in the second page. That's already on my website. And I put that up just before the election in November. And it's, it's a 48-page article. It's at the top of TCfamily.org. It's 12 pages, from pages 17 to 28. And it's excellent material. There, that's all, the actual transcription. Not that I did. It's perfect. And there's so much in there. And there's a video to go along with. It's only 16 minutes long, so start there. And then also, the stolenelectionfacts.com has a whole lot on the computer fraud of Venezuela. And this guy's an expert there. He was ahead of the DOJ, FBI, DEA, and DHS in Latin America. So he knows Venezuela. That's where it all started from. Here's the, see if I can play this now. Sure, this is on? Yep. Here we go.
So, in terms of the election, I feel, and I don't know anything about how stuff works. You guys do, so we'll get into that. And for me, as a citizen and a layperson, when you bring up a subject, you know, like, you go, okay, the Board. I want to stop Board. And then you go to the Republicans and you go, you want to stop Board? And they go, "Yeah, we want to build a wall. I'm going to put the army there." You go, "Oh, okay." Democrats, what do you want? "We want to stop Board too." "Oh, okay." "So you want to build a wall?" "No, no wall." Walls never stopped anyone from going anywhere. Let's go, well, there's a wall around your house and there's one around every prison. All right, but, so you don't want a wall? "No." "But you, you do want to secure and stop Board, right?" "Yeah." "Well, then how about putting troops on the border?" "No, no, we're not, we're not doing that either." And you're like, "Well, what are you doing?" "Well, we've annoyed Kamala Harris at the border." "Oh, okay, where is she, at the border?" "No, she's not at the border. We're moving the border." I go, "Well, okay, I'm starting to think that maybe this isn't what it's not you want." And you go, "Yeah, it is. That's what we want." And then I go, they go, "We want to secure elections." You go, "Oh, good, so you're for ID, then, right?" "No, no, we're not." And you go, "Okay, and then, well, you want election debt?" "No, we're doing it every month. We're mailing it." And it's the same with the Board. I'm going, "Well, maybe you're not as into this as you're saying you are." So that's just where I land. It doesn't mean they're doing something illegal. It just means I don't think you're as into it as you say you are.
Yeah, well, Gary can explain.
So, the next part, part three, is what I put on last week. And this is linked to it on the website, too, last week's. And this is all we need. Voter ID, citizen-only voting, paper ballots, and counts, paper poll boards, not electronic voter poll boards, in-person voting, small voter precincts, and one-day elections. And the last thing about Charlie Kirk is passing the baton on to us. And the basic starting point of rule out for and by the people is honest elections. We've got to start there. That's where everything starts. That's where the peace in the county starts from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Any other public comment? Mr. White?
Hello again, Commissioners. When Mr. Dyer interviewed for his job, he emphasized being a mediator. But in both of his interviews, he also volunteered something unusual. That behind closed doors, he often relies on yelling at employees and even elected officials to get results. That was how, how he described his own management style. Since then, we've seen glimpses of that temper in public, and that we just saw earlier this evening. In one meeting, he pounded the table and declared, quote, "The treasurer is not in charge of the budget, nor is the Finance Director. I am," unquote. In another meeting of this, this very commission, he told a sitting commissioner that that commissioner had no authority to question him on how he was doing his job. And then I personally made a comment saying that was unacceptable and inappropriate to talk to his boss that way in public. If this is what happens on camera, what happens behind closed doors with his employees who serve at will? Especially when staff have quietly described feelings of being pressured or silenced if you have a grievance going on, apparently, but are reluctant to speak for fear of losing jobs and benefits. And when that happens, this Board should be concerned. The pattern here is hard to miss. A public image of reasonableness, reasonable-ness, and private intimidation, often directed at the women who work with him. We have claims of him being a bridge builder, yet boasting and screaming to control outcomes. He displays flashes of anger in public meetings, which raises concerns about his private behavior. This is not the leadership that Leland County deserves. And Commissioners, you have both the duty and the authority to insist on a higher standard. That means holding the administrator, this administrator or any other, accountable for not just his public words, but for the climate that he creates behind closed doors with his county employees. The people of Leland County and their government employees expect, respect accountability and trust, not intimidation disguised as leadership. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Nick Eater. I'm here with my partner, Kerry. We live in the Park Township. And it's a pretty surprising meeting and the content. I'd like to go back a couple of months because the auditorium is here. And at least the thing was the auditorium said, "This county is the enemy of their county in the state of Michigan. You have capital to take care of the emergencies that may arise. You're not charging the disorder of market taxes." In other words, the capital is not growing beyond what is reasonable in terms of future need. I hope as Commissioners you will remember that you have a management responsibility, so does a leadership responsibility. It's an amazing place to live. And maintaining the programs that disturb the population that address the challenges that our family members and our neighbors are confronted with in their lives. These are our responsibilities, and we need to think not only about scarcity. You're in the budget process right now. I imagine, I've been in literally hundreds of budget processes. You see numbers, but it's difficult to pay attention to what those numbers purchase, and the goods and services that they provide, and the way in which those programs improve the lives of our neighbors, our family members, our friends, but also make this a decent place to live. There was a discussion tonight about mental health services. There are not enough in this country. It's not a place to cover. We've had discussions about early childhood. There was a tremendous amount of evidence about the value of early childhood programs for the lifelong quality of life of the children of our swarming community. So I wanted to just remind you that there's a lot of chaos and a lot of things discussed this evening that I don't understand. But I did want to remind you that we have a tremendous county here, a tremendous place to live, and that hopefully, we can figure out a way to cooperate with each other so that we don't mess it up. And I thank you for sitting in these seats and for helping develop programs and policies that make this a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, not. Move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner comments? Mr. Robbins?
I thought cherry picking season ended about six weeks ago. Seems like a lot of people in this room like to cherry pick when it benefits them. You know, I'm one of the few commissioners up here that can say I can talk to both sides. I go to your group, talk to you. I try to help you guys out. I go to the Dems, I try to help them out. You know, I hear from you guys back there that you want us to be transparent on our budget. You want us to slow things down. I listened to another commissioner at a meeting say, "We should have a hiring freeze." I ran with it. I talked to you. You said run with it too. You're tired of us spending money, so I'm doing what you asked me to do, but then you come up here, you crucify our administrator, you crucify us board members up here, and we're trying to do the right thing that you're asking, and it's getting old. So I don't know what you want, Mr. White, or any of you. You know, we're trying to, you know, we're slowing this budget down. We've got a great chairperson here. He's doing budget different than we're used to. We've got an administrator that's laid
When were?
Here, no, no. No.
Virtual attacks.
So I'm just saying, you know, I'm confused. You know, if you want me to come and listen to you and then present your ideas here, then, you know, you can't be contradicting me either. So, I mean, I've been the one who made that motion. It's all, it's business sense. We're in the fourth quarter. If you're in a business in the fourth quarter, if you haven't spent the money, a lot of businesses, you keep it on hold. As I said, this was just a pause. This wasn't a hiring freeze. It was a pause for 60 days. And if you read the motion, it says right in there, if any administrative head or elected official here, if they need acquisition, there was a channel for them to go through. There was due process here, but no one gave it a chance. I mean, I haven't heard from our financial person since I made that motion, but I've heard from other people in this business. There was a lot of politicking going on. As I call it, it's commissioner shopping, and it's got to end. This man said a whole mouthful here. We live in a great county, but in this room, we don't. We don't practice it, and we need to start.
Mr. Watson?
I wanted to thank Mickey for the reminder and the comments, and also Dana. I read Dana's, the clerk sent it out to us a little bit earlier today, and here's a message there, and I don't, I don't, we don't do these kind of resolutions here at this table, but I'm going to take that as a challenge for myself. This is the resolution. I'm going to try to do what Dana suggested we all do.
Mr. Allgayer?
I too would hope that we will focus on doing our job to improve the lives of the people in this county and to use our tax dollar wisely. We have a very competent, good administrator. That hiring freeze includes this statement. All you have to do is work with your administrator. That's it. It's not, I verify, we don't have to wait a month. That's very simple. I've never worked at a job where I didn't have to work with my boss. So I hope we can move on and not focus on division, but let's focus on the good of the county. I'm not sure what that does, but we've gone through too much of that in the last few years. It doesn't help anybody. It tears us down. Let's focus on building us up and working together, living in peace, and remembering our focus on serving all of you with your tax dollar to the best of our ability. I hope we can move on.
Any other commissioner comments? All right. Not. We'll move on to approval of financials.
Are we going to a closed session first?
Yeah, we should go in the closed session.
Oh, I thought you wanted that after review of financials, or approval of financials.
No, I said review of financials.
Oh, I thought you wanted it after approval and everything, but it's not.
We can.
Well, we can, I guess.
I misheard you, if that's the case.
We can do that.
You okay with that?
Yeah. Go ahead.
What are we doing?
No, we're doing it. We're going to get her done, Kathy.
Late rate claims to accounts for regular session, 261,626.07.
I make the motion that we approve claims on accounts for 261,626.7 cents. Support.
Move and supported. Discussion. Not. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried seven zero.
I make the motion to approve post audit, 6,197,261.70. Support.
All right, it's moved and supported. Discussion. Not. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right.
All right, now I make the motion that we go into closed session. We have Kirk, administrator witness.
To discuss
Yeah, contract.
To discuss labor negotiations?
Yeah.
Then I would second it.
I want to make sure, I just brought one to my office to get it, that we're doing this according to
Yeah, please.
Just a second, give me a second. 15 point, here I got it, that we're going to go into closed session to discuss strategy and negotiation for collective bargaining, as permitted by MCL 15.268, Baron one, Baron C, and use up the following individuals to be included, our administrator, and you get me either way. So is that what your motion was?
Yes.
I think we ought to amend that because Jen is a part of the team, and I think we are
And Alorin also?
Yeah.
That would be very willing to amend.
And that was by Bonnie, can you second to that?
And?
Okay, so we're going to include
Are you okay with that?
I'm sorry, are we ready for the call? Or are you still discussing?
No, no, go for it.
Okay, so Commissioner Bonnie?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
He took, he went to the restroom, so.
So Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Allgayer?
Yes.
Okay, and that'll be six zero. Are we going to just take a recess for a second until he gets here?
Yeah, let's just make eight minutes.
The whole bathroom thing sounds good.
Goodness gracious.
Cameras. I was going to
And I'll listen to Allman Brothers on
Mr. Wessel?
And will we go out of closed session? Second.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried seven zero. You have a motion?
I move to recommend the county board of commissioners sign a settlement agreement drafted by legal counsel addressing outstanding agreements as unfair labor practice and attempted bargaining with the commission. Terminal order, please, need a pass.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Discussion. Not. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried six one.
All right, with that, we're adjourned.